And this is. What are your thoughts on?
What are my thoughts on it? Is that what you said? I'm sorry, the audio is not great.
I know this has been an issue that's been important to you. I just wanted to hear just your thought.
Uh, no, I'm just thrilled. Yeah. Uh, Chief and I spoke a little bit about it offline too, and I let him know how happy I was about it. And I, I think it's a big step. I think it's a big step for um the people of our town. It it's a, it's a very caring approach, which is one of my big concerns. So, thank you.
You know them, they all upside.
I think that's a good point. That's great. And Javier, how you factor that in the budget? I think you, I mean, some of my suggestion here, I'm a bit of a random person. I kind of jump to the chase. I just want to see that we can cover those two personnel areas and then see what suggestions you have for us to meet the other needs that we'll have at the town. With balancing a budget that is both as, as Councilor Isaac said, that's as skin and bone as it, as it needs to be, but also has a little bit of fat and is in the right place. So speaking of enough that that's there uh as, as our nutrients that we need, so to speak, that give the sustenance to our town to be able to be effective in what we do, both especially with the police and with the staff.
Um. So what I've, what I shared up there, the budget that includes COLA.
Okay.
I already removed the, sorry for how it's a little bit rough, but it looks like power points. Uh, or itself. So, two nine two is the, if we kept our meal set slack. So there's a small increase from, I'm hoping, uh, good business in town.
Right.
Uh. Small amounts there where I think we're going to come in a little bit stronger than previous year, but not as strong as we kind of projected this year. Uh, and then uh, we're stronger in transit occupancy and this now includes the 1% increase that we're getting by government services. Uh, on the spending side, that white column right there, it says proposed, sorry for how small it is. For example, we remove.
We missed the grant writer.
Yeah, I'm trying to get, yeah, it's the last one. So you remove the grant writer and then.
Let's go to line item, but right there, AEDs and uh, I don't think we, can we cut back to one?
Is that 1,500?
Yeah, so put 1,500 in there. And then let's cut back on the security by half, do 3,000 on that. But we can still get some improvement, you know, locks on the doors and stuff like that. We can probably do something in that $3,000 window.
I think so. I, the main advantage is that we already have a lot of setup from when we put in the D M B. So putting any cameras is cheaper because you aren't doing it from the beginning. And then.
I'd like to see these doors more secure, nothing else.
I would start with that because I.
Yeah, because I, I feel like I can kick in the door.
Yes, I. I don't particularly need it, also. You could, you could do it, you probably would work.
That would be.
That's what I think. Well, I don't know about a couple hundred, but.
Yeah. No, um, I've been surprised.
Lock, yeah, I think it's lock, good lock person. We did our work with.
It's not just the locks though, Bill. We might need new, some new framing and stuff like that. If you, tho- those doors really wiggle. These locks are very, you know, these doors are hollow core doors. They're.
It starts with one or two doors every time.
So you just cut it in half, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so where, where are we now?
Um, so looking at the summary, we're at 40 there.
Okay, so we still need five 40 grand.
I like to cut that kind of, for that kind of, or cut it off a part of administrative staff. I think that needs to be studied.
You said, oh, here we added the, what, 2% of movement and then a percent? Yeah, so this amount has a 3%.
3%, yeah.
I did the math on that.
I, I think we should go just with police, give them a tune to anybody else. Not this year.
I tend to agree from around, you would probably want it to all, especially.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Different, you don't have to be same.
No, I, I think you have a good, cost of living is cost of living.
And uh. I think.
Well, again, in an effort to get staff, I don't need the increase. Council was very generous and bumped my pay. I'm fine. Uh, I would much rather see Jim or one of our police officers get a pay increase than me get an increase.
I mean, that, sorry, Chief, I'm just, so March 2024, prices had increased by 3.5%.
That's right.
That's, this is, this is just governance. So all I was going to say, I would say whether it's 2% or 3%, we, I think it's, it's across the board. Again, always, it, it's not any great thing. All it's doing is keeping everybody.
On pace with federal numbers inflation.
So I, so I think at the very least at the moment, go keep the police percent in there. Now, so that keeps us at minus 40,000, uh, so we're still 40,000.
Yeah, um, what I would suggest is our current staff is pretty good about uh extending the life of both of our vehicles. Uh, maybe this is not the year to look at a maintenance vehicle.
I was looking at that number, the 17.
And I hope the market will get better.
We only got two vehicles, so.
Count, I'll, I'll.
That's extra, that's a decline.
Only 20,000 out. Or if you put cameras in the park, you're talking about paying the lose, they're going to get stolen.
I don't think you're going to increase, but nothing ever happens there.
Count, what part do you want?
I don't know.
I'm assuming that kind of.
Then I'll ace it.
I don't know what I think, but there are very few people going.
Okay, so let's take park camera now.
What are they going to do?
Before that, we're just.
That's funny.
Counsel, I want to ask you this, one quick question. Can you hear me over there? Counsel, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Question is, with, with our town administrators and judgment, you have a 3% cost of living in there. Give us your thoughts. I happen to think that's a good idea. What cost do you have?
I'm, I'm so sorry. It's not fabulous audio. I'm keeping 3% cost.
So, if, so right now we're working off of using a 3% cost of living for all staff. I have a good idea. I just don't know what your thoughts.
I think it's very important that we keep that in there. Um, out of fairness to the cost of living is probably over the next couple of years going to go up more than 3%, but just something to at least keep people steady. Like, like I said earlier in the evening, I think we're already not competitive. And I think we're extremely lucky to have the staff that we have. Um, and I am 100% for keeping the cost of living adjustments in.
Thank you. And then Counsel Morse, your thoughts on it?
Uh, absolutely, for it. I think, again, we're happy with the staff we have. I think we should signal them and I think we should honor the staff that we have by keeping pace with the flesh. So I think that's it.
Okay, and then it worries you still, your statistics, you're still.
Half of them.
You're still, uh, half of 70% of the cost of living.
And then, so coming back to you, Javier, are, so my, so after working off this, what I'm trying to do is see what, where there's a consensus that we come up with numbers together. I know Counsel Harrison has a different idea, which is fine, and maybe the other two town councils will too. I don't know. Just trying to work. Because we got to come up with the number that works ultimately. So what else can we move up? So down to 27.
Yeah.
So 27.
Continue yourself.
Good mayor.
The big one is administrative. Let's cut that. Um, maybe for that benefit or not at all. Study, study that over the years, see if we, we really need that and see how that could be a bill. Maybe it could be a part time thing just to fill in when these people are on vacation or see how that works.
Well, what if we started out by cutting it in half and having that person three days a week or something like that?
We may catch up the week.
As needed.
Probably go forward in the next week, we have meetings.
Right.
And we'll be doing busy occasions a week in next day and see how it works.
I mean.
What's going to happen if you don't get somebody in here to help with the phones and, and things like that? Then Javier is going to be busy with this. So no one is going to be busy answering the phones and trying to rehearse stuff and everybody's going to be hard on about minutes for the past meeting.
Right.
They're not getting them out in time and the people who are looking to do that don't have the time to do it because they have to do what their faith do to start with.
Exactly.
And so, uh.
I'm right with the mayor on this one. I think we at least need a part time.
Three, I am too.
Um. Take a step back. You said cut park cameras, right?
Yeah.
Cut the park cameras and park vehicles, we're not giving up 20 of those.
Yeah.
Gets the sound.
And the AED things.
Right, the AED. He's already taken that out.
So what is a, uh, cap one for a meal set? Uh, how important a meal set would be? Sorry, I didn't put that in right. So I get you a return of phone.
I think we're already at 24, minus 24.
So we'll do a heads point on the meal stack. If you say you're.
You're at 16.
You're almost there because it's 25 divided by a half.
I'll tell you, when we raised it last year, there was a lot of noise about it and rightly so. I mean, I, I just don't think we can keep going back to that well and expecting the business to.
I believe we're changing that. Not even thinking about raising it this year because we've got the new Mexican restaurant, we've got new photography.
Right.
Uh. You know, if people come here to open restaurants and all of a sudden, well, we haven't been here a year ago, and the tax.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Well said.
But we, let me ask Javier this question. Well. Since, since the smooth shop will be selling different things, is there anything that we get? Get anything back from the state also, we're hard to pursue. That is, Melanie and I started talking about that because uh, anything packaged, we wouldn't get a meal stacks on. And then I'm not sure. I would kind of look at Greg to maybe for a little bit of advice on this. Or what? Is there anything that's paid in front of that?
For instance, like alcohol.
Was that middle one? No, no, so. We're going to talk about everything I want to talk about at our work session, but. So you all know I met with the owners of it two weeks ago and very nice people. They will be selling edibles, everything that's legal under the state statute. Uh, there are T H, THC A products that will be sold in here and that's the flower of the cannabis plant. But then after that conversation, I was asked about pop-up events. What a pop-up event is? Everyone?
I did not.
So these pop-up events would be on a Friday or something, it can be like, uh, they would invite X number of vendors into the establishment down here. They would sell their layers and then they would give cannabis out to those from those that purchased. There would be a door fee that they would charge. I, I'm just making this number up. Let's say 10 bucks. Uh, for people to come in and make their purchases, do whatever and leave. Can't use any of the product on location, none of that stuff. I reached out to um Sheriff over in Nelson County, I mean, do anyone, do it in, in love with like that. I don't know if there's any additional packs that could be raised or license fees for those pop-ups or not. I'm not sure. But if he wanted me to sign off on something like that, and I just felt it's legal, I researched the code, it's definitely legal for them to do it. But I wanted to reach out to maybe Charlottesville, Nelson County for sure. They're doing it there. Under, the only drawback that I can see is when you have these pop-ups, some of the vendors come in and they actually would make the gift out or sell other things that are illegal. So we would have to be a little more diligent, diligent on monitoring that for ourselves. Uh, know that was one vendor that was arrested for mushrooms that they were getting rid of while at one of the pop-ups. But the police addressed the one vendor, everybody else went about business. So Javier, I don't know what revenues those pop-ups bring, could bring. I, I don't know. That part I don't know.
Will it really sell the money?
You talking about the illegal?
Well, the, the examples, you may sell the money.
I think you have to be a certain.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, they have to do. And that's because it's their business because they'll get shut down in a heartbeat.
True, but I don't know if there's an opportunity, you know, I wanted it out without counsel. That's not a police decision, you know, what the town wants, products in the town doing these things. That's a council decision.
Well, I mean, if it's legal, I don't see how council can say you can't do it.
Sure. So. Um, I've done the research on it, it's legal. I'd like to see, just in case you all had questions about what are the drawbacks to allowing something like this? And then how can you leverage these pop-ups for additional agents? I'm not sure.
And that might be, so if you, my recommendation, Chief, would be to continue your, your research with neighboring counties that might have that. And also on the work session, let's bring it up and have Mr. Bowlen where he is because that he might definitely have some advice for us and stuff. But I, I don't see, I would think it's a liability for us to shut something down. If it's legal, I could say that, I mean, that, that to me means losses, right? So.
I just wanted to see kind of like the business plan, the model, what, what do you, what exactly, how many, how many vendors are you going to bring in that space? Uh, what are the impacts on traffic? People, we there was a pop-up in the city of Charlottesville and there were people lined up around a thousand, a thousand people showed up. What exact words do you use? People waiting outside and.
But, but you know, the encouraging thing is Chief, that he did speak to you about it, right? So he's interested in doing the right thing within the community and whatnot. And I think that's a very positive sign. So, uh, I think the best we can do is continue to do the research, to work with this particular seller and to uh try to anticipate those things that might happen. You'll find that out in your research.
Can, yes, thank you. But can you leverage those pop-ups for any other revenues or does it? They may work, you know, their business licenses. Yeah, my, my concern that is maybe similar to alcohol where all that revenue goes to the state.
Yeah.
Rather than into, so we aren't capturing it with any of our tools.
Any sales tax?
Um, if they do well, then their business license will be higher. So that is a good point. Um, but our, our, our business license is a very small gross uh receipts. It's a small amount, which I, I think is good. Uh, in, in excess. Um. What I could do, and I already wrote it down, is to include some information to provide for you guys during work session also. Uh, talk to Jim and explore with some other towns. If, if there's any opportunity like that, and towns are usually looking for uh, a piece of the pot, for example. We're gonna check with Nelson County's town administrator or somebody on their staff. I don't know if they handle vendors at another business. Yeah. I mean, all our vendors, I got to tell you something, because they, they get the best, they draw vendors, they're not who, who, they like to buy. I guess they lost that license a little bit too. He has to have a license in that building to sell what he sells.
Right.
Doesn't the vendors that he invites into the business, they have to have a license. They don't have a license. They are, so when each per, each vendor that he invites in there couldn't sell under his license. They have to sell under their license. So would the town be able to collect off of that license? Similar to like a food truck in a parking lot?
Yeah, but that's the legal question, I think, for Mr. Bowling too, is.
We have our two of theirs, their licenses, too.
I know, like, when I. I know when I was doing, and this is not even close, but I know when I was doing some work on the side in Charlottesville, they would host an event and have all the vendors under that event umbrella. Their event umbrella covered the licensing, licensing for everybody that participated in that event. That was for a certain event. In other events, you had to purchase your own uh license to sell your product.
Ask that music box. You, you, the, the tablet got insured a lot years ago because they only coming in and playing for the songs. And what, there was that license.
I know.
So if they were selling, they had a license, your band was that kind of license, you need to play you. They are not good long, you can cover that. Same thing downstairs with the violins. You don't have that license for Asta to play you, but I'm a hitman.
Wow.
So our, our clerk also noticed that if we um, if we were deciding on cutting uh municipal, most of 7,000, 3,000 in regards to doors and cameras, we have it doubled up in our capital. So there's 3,000 coming out also, so.
Can you just, just for argument's sake, can we, I, I know we've talked about this. Can we just look at the rental income and just double that? Just for the sake of argument, see, see where we are now.
So.
And I do agree, we should have a conversation, but and then there is the unknown of an entertainment tax that we couldn't capitalize on. I think that's something to explore.
Counsel Morse, this, this 2,800?
Yeah.
Include the doubling of that rental. Because a good chunk of that is that.
And then where are we now?
Where.
Eileen?
Yeah.
Um, one thing with the entertainment tax that I was asking Javier, was, I'm so sorry about the horsoness. Um, was, you know, like if the Riviera Club has a band and they charge a cover, would that would we be able to capitalize on that? Same thing with like James River Brewery. If they have a, a small band in there and they charge a cover. So that might be something we could think about too.
Thanks, Melanie. We're down to 13,000 and that's good from the 47.
Well, we're, we're also street lighting, we're going to, um, from that 1,000 to 8,000.
Yeah, so I pulled it out last month on that. Our street lighting shot up very high and I double checked it with Melanie uh, because it was high enough that it was concerning if there was an accounting mistake on our side, but um.
So, okay, that's impossible. But then also, you, you never mentioned that thing about the engineer that we might be.
No, we haven't.
I would say that's an issue.
Engineer for?
So.
For, for the town, all the change, we don't train. We went to a meeting and we suggested we get an engineer.
For they?
Almaral County, Almaral County.
For what?
For, for developments, any developments here.
It might be more, take a step back and explain the meeting we had.
Yeah, I could do that, but.
Um, so Phil and I with a couple, couple others uh, met with Almaral County.
Who attended?
Uh, it was Matthew Holt, um.
Who's there?
Louis Cable, me and you. Um, we met with county community and development.
The engineer.
Yeah, an engineer. Um, Bill has expressed to me concerns about our site plan reviews um, in our process in regards to zoning specifically Berry Street. Um, one recommendation, they, they were very useful and very informative.
Very well.
Um, one suggestion is that often towns uh have a resident engineer, which you do as a consultancy to either do a, when you need to, site plan reviews, uh roadmap reviews.
Yeah, there's a lot of issues in the place here.
County will do water, water, uh, W P O, so our water plan reviews.
Bill, that's not accurate, by the way. You, you keep saying it's live, that's inaccurate.
No, it's not.
I said that is inaccurate.
We don't know.
We do.
Right?
We do. They came out, I mean, you could tell them the issues.
What, what I'm saying to you is, they're, they're being, they're being addressed. There's a process. There's nothing.
Right, and that was, I'm going to go plenty.
I'm just saying what you're saying is inaccurate.
Well, we, a lot of issues came out that there were shortcuts and that they haven't fallen through um, uh, regulations. And uh, they, they, they were astounded too because you're looking at what the county does and what the town does and what they do together. And, and one of the big issues was, uh, you know, the land that they have assigned out and they have drainage jobs now, their land. And so they would have to address that. Uh, and there were several other issues about, about the ordinances that they would never, um, you know, get approval and outmark without an engineer overseeing the project. So there's a lot, of course, the relevant too, but they, uh, you know, it's, 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 it's a good ways away before we, we get into this. I mean, you're, you're singing a song that's wasted.
No, no, you're telling what they said.
What I'm saying to you is, again, the, the issues of us as a town in terms of the project that was located over there, there's many steps that they have to go through in that process. And what I'm saying is those steps are all part of the normal procedures that it has to go through.
They're not being, there's no motorcycle.
Javier, is that true?
So I would characterize it in a different matter. What I would put is that, for example, zoning review that came out of that is relatively straightforward. You want to make sure that your initial site matches up when you go through your different easements. Now, something as specific as if uh, our conditions do have a phase two uh, or yeah, a phase two study, they did an additional study. Now, there's more value to an engineer reviewing that study. I'm more than comfortable reviewing it, but I'm not to be charitable and engineer. Um, some of it is just corrections that need to get done on site plans. Or for example, uh, they're using a wetland easement that's on a different property that would have been the same property. Um, but due to uh, the lack of progress on the factory, it stayed as two different corporations.
Right.
That's already a correction that um Almaral is interested in including from the conversation. So I think it's much more nuanced than the conversation here. Um, to be frank, that was one of the interests I think we met a few days before and I wanted to report out on this and use the last special session, but we didn't have an opportunity on it. Um. I think there's a value with uh, having an engineer, but um, it's a costly endeavor.
You know, one of somebody mentioned, maybe we could do it, what we do with, like we do with police. I mean, so I think that's a possibility that they could, they could uh, help us with this.
I think would be more straightforward because the other issue is um jurisdiction. And at that point, you're giving up your zoning to Almaral.
Yeah.
At that point, you weren't actually a town.
Right.
Like I'm not.
That's my, that's my issue.
And then um.
Isn't it Javier too, that we could get help, maybe to follow up on his point, uh, Counselor Tyson's point is somebody like the Thomas Jefferson planning. We need to pay them. They could, they could also be helpful in the process.
Yeah, I think it would be one of two situations. Either they would state that we aren't a member because we technically aren't as a town. And then if they were.
We are as part of the county.
I agree with you on that.
I pay my taxes.
But uh, I, I remember we left that mutual meeting with T J and, and Lincoln and we got that sensation. Also, T J about six months ago uh, stated that they were full in capacity even to be hired to do staff work. Um, it would be the same as, so I spoke with uh, county staff today for a little bit of advice on this, kind of anticipating it. Um. He, his piece of advice, if you wanted to pursue it, you would do a plan review and then you would uh, due to our size of town or our population and also um likely our budgetary limits, um, you could try to get three quotes and then you would set an hourly rate and try to set a very specific um scope. Um, so for example, you would, essentially what you would do is you set your upper limit and then you are very careful with asking how much time X or Y plan review would take and then stick with that naturally within your budget. Um. That could be from 10,000 to 20 to 30. And then of course, consultancy.
That's not money, well.
Yeah.
It's not money.
Uh, for example, the comp plan was 80,000, I think.
Yeah.
From last time I remember off of a new boat. Um. You can try to increase, I think what was useful was having a much more dedicated relationship. You can try to increase, I think what was useful was having a much more dedicated relationship uh with county staff and asking for recommendations like that. Um but uh, yeah, we went up, was it a Monday morning? It's been a morning.
It sounds like they're willing to help, and they're gonna even come up here and look at that uh scoreboard.
I I think charitably, I found county staff to be very good with me on a one-to-one basis. Um I think when they say no, it's because of reasonable things, jurisdiction, time limits, other priorities. Uh they have their board of supervisors. Um so I looked into details about it also out of curiosity.
No, I appreciate you looking at it. I I think there's a agenda there that's not, it's not a benefit for the town that's being forwarded. So I I will just say that the concern I have, coming back to our budget, is I don't think that's something for that, that might be something a bit forward in the future, but but not at the moment.
I think that's gonna be costly.
I'll check about that, I will do, see if we could, we're with them somehow, they could help us. Because there's a lot of things uh that are missing. They need an easement plan, a subdivision plan, and then probably something to deal with, deal with the dam there.
But is that according to their ordinances or our ordinances?
So we, so WPL, they'll check engineering, I check the zone, subdivision, roads. We check zoning.
Right.
They'll do engineering. I think to Bill's point, it would be useful for me to have uh an opportunity to interact with them a lot more.
Yeah, to get advice on that.
Yeah, and that's that's just building relationship. Um so I I think that first meeting was also very useful, uh meeting all their planning staff um in person.
That's great. Hey, let's continue all of this. But anyway, you.
Well, can we get?
Can we, can we?
We're at sixteen.
Did you get a estimate? Um they gave us a list of people.
So he's, I need to talk to their procurement office. What's most interesting is what the hourly rates would be, because that would dictate us. Um most piece of advice is standard, you you set a block and then you administer them very carefully. You make sure that they are, in Spanish you say making hours. Uh yeah, uh that, does that translate? Yeah, that's the word. Um I can look into it further, that was some pretty good advice we got from a high up engineer over there. I can share notes on it too, uh for transparency.
Right, can we have the get back to the budget discussion so we can?
Yes, you have a dollar one.
Right, exactly, thank you.
Javier.
Yes.
Can you check on the farmer's market? It looks like maybe we have it doubled also.
The ten, what is it normally five?
You have, we have under capital improvements, you have paving burden all that for two thousand and then under farmer's market, under the pavilion, we have pretty much the same thing again for three thousand. So is that doubled or is that just divided out?
There were nothing, I see on page three.
I think it depends on.
You have capital improvements uh under Canal Basin Square at exhibits.
Right, I see.
And then on the back, you have farmer's market out by itself.
It's it's slid out. I guess the big question is, there's there's plenty of things you can do in the farmer's market, but how much do we want to do this year?
Oh, I see.
Have we spent anything? Um you said, you said some on um, we have plumbing issues coming out of uh the winter into the spring. And then other than that, we realize that much on.
So we still have seven, about six thousand.
Well, it's, that payment to market manager advertising telephone, seven thousand?
Yeah, so they get a siphon every bi-weekly of two hundred, so it ends up being uh like five thousand and something, and then the telephone would be the hotspot, thirty dollars a month. And then, uh what's the word? It ends up weighing your accent fast.
Yeah.
Because that's, that was rolling down, we'd see what's what.
Yeah, and the pavilion maintenance, I thought that was going to be for um the posts of the pavilion that were rotting at the bar.
The fans.
I rational. But this doesn't, this three thousand will cover the posts.
The baller. My rationale was, it was that we've placed some fans that are broken up there.
Mm-hmm, that's a good idea.
We had lights that have just opened off and uh even just getting Janice stamp in gravel in the holes.
Yeah.
Maybe we could do that with three thousand.
Okay.
I was thinking of the ballers as uh. Honestly, I've had the ballers before.
Yeah.
Either the bird exclusion, uh the paving, I would just kill it. Uh this is certainly brought over from last year, with two thousand, maybe to the ballers.
But we can do.
Okay, then we should, we should have that all in one place or another place.
What, does that move the, sorry?
Are we gonna resell it or is it gonna repair it or what?
Um I shared over email with this with you. Um we in November, the sign got sheared out because of wind, because it was too low. And it was also getting um, it got left in November where our previous maintenance staff was attempting to get uh the contractor that made it to come back and install it. Um which I always think is worth the price rather than um.
Somebody else.
Than getting a cherry picker.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um I followed up on it about a week and a half ago. Um since my maintenance staff also brought it up as something he wanted to do. I'd like to try that first, if not, I'd probably have to purchase another one for a couple hundred dollars and then see if they would install it also as a favor. It has to go up higher, it needs to catch on the wind and it just sheer it off. And it would also help with uh with the food truck, because the food truck was uh concerned that they were gonna hit it back up.
Is that a soft banner? Is that what the issue is? Can't we get something nicer in there?
Yes.
Like, do we have a kiosk left over? Can we have the kiosk with a farmer's market thing on it or something? Just sitting there and it's a great location for it.
That was one of the recommendations.
Well, that's a recommendation, we can change that, we need to, right?
Maybe, I mean, we could do, we still have a council member and maintenance staff that's willing to, they were willing to install it. And that would be the big cost on it.
Yeah. Let's get it up over near the farmer's market and just put a permanent sign up there instead of that flag.
Does that seem like?
Would that, would that not take too much space though?
Depends on where we put it.
Uh yeah, depends on where we put it. My concern is some of the base we already use, the sides.
Let's explore it at least, and then you can take this out.
Were you talking about the kiosk?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just put it on grassy area about a rescue. Up towards the.
Well, I guess there.
Exactly. There's gotta be somewhere that we can put absolutely, and then we can take out the cost for that sign. And we'd have a more permanent solution.
So there's something, a couple of people have sponsored by also ask for banner. Do they, do we do banners anymore?
So.
People don't even know where the farmer's market is unless they.
Also, the email sent out to you, um I I don't remember a banner, I asked Jan for Bill, look for it this week.
We have banners, so we don't have one.
Fourth and Bat, that was the only one that I. We might have had a farmer's market, maybe it was a suggestion, it isn't a bad idea to have one.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah, so are we at fourteen now, Javier?
Eleven.
Oh, eleven, that's pretty good, we're good now. So.
Another down there.
If we're going to pick up some of this at the work session, can we all go home and look at this and see if we can find out places to carve that last eleven thousand out?
Do you want me to send this update out?
Yeah.
That would be really helpful.
And I would even suggest, can you recommend, and you also recommend, where would you take?
Yeah, maybe you and Melody could look through it too. We can all look through it and come back at the work session and say, hey, we think we can meet this or not. Or do we have to cut something that's in the budget to meet the eleven thousand dollar shortfall?
Does the mayor have to make twenty quid next year or something? And I I'd just still like to give a little agency support, or at least maybe the government service. And that would have to see a way we could do that, because I think that's always been a difficulty. I have no difficulty with the mayor.
I know, I don't know.
Yeah, but I think what difficulty is, we're in a different month, you know, if we're gonna, we're gonna donate any money, kind of like a charity. I know Almar gets to, you know, do more. I have different agencies, I do not favor government services giving it one more second's time, whatever. Because we've already said as a town council, how we view about it, it's generally viewed favor. Which, well, I know, but I mean, as far as what we do, we're, I would be interested as a town council, not as government services.
Right, I agree with Dan. I think we know where government services stands at this point.
No, I think they would be fine, but I think they could look at a fair and thoughtful way of of contributing to these agencies that would that would be beneficial to the broad community, not just to, you know, because I think in the past, like if they get the voice closed, you know, you know, there's probably like four kids in Scottsville that do that, but there's so many other places.
Four kids in Scottville, do you have those, Melody?
What, yes, yes.
You have four kids, you know their names and you know that.
I know, but there's, there's actually more than uh Bubana and Buckingham. Um there's eighteen go to uh Buckingham and ten go to Bubana and the rest go to Alamo. And uh very few, I know some kids who go there, but there's, it's mostly uh outside the area and and Alamo doesn't give in. So I I would, we give it to last year, I wouldn't mind broadening. The basketball game clothes, socks told me they really need money. You know, there's uh, there's the museum, there's PTA, I mean, there's a lot of places that could use some some money. The Wheels on Wheels could use it. I mean, I could, I could go into the the uh food pantry, but I I guess that's my thing, but I, but I think there's better uses for it. If we're gonna do, if we want to give out uh money as a donation to a agency. I have problems with donations because we're, somebody told me that we should have a donation for the town for things.
My, I agree with that, I would have said, having a donation to the town.
We do, we did. Right, and many, many.
That's right.
But we could also, can we also solicit money for, we need money for, we need money for this to be.
This is the revenue question, right? So listen, we could be doing things like via grit to improve the the sidewalks or Canal Basin Square. There's many, many things that this council should be considering in terms of revenue, not in terms of spend. Spend is a short-term fix to a long-term problem.
But you know, if you went to a property tax, we're saying, give us your money and then we're throwing it into other people that aren't interested in this really town.
Well, you guys, same here, it's like the chamber elements, let's have a fun way here to, the money is fun for this particular post. Now, I can say, I think, let's have a fun way here and let me see, tell them I have to go.
I think that's the way we should know.
Average daily attendance at the boys' girls club there is eighty-five right now. And in the summertime, it's uh about a hundred and forty-five. So it's not thirty-four.
Yeah, I think it changes too, right?
But I mean, it's a national organization.
But they're not funded nationally each.
That's more obvious to salvation.
Required to make their own money, they they don't get national funding.
I have three boys and girls clubs up there already. Well, that's Almar's challenge, but we have a real asset, we have a boys' girls club and we are trying to give them some.
I don't think we made.
You know, I don't think you should be avoiding.
But he can vote, so he can weigh in.
Should be weighing in. But I, but I like to weigh in, I'm taking care of the four of us.
Okay, you're with the fifth group of members, you were talking with the town, gave, gave bread and wine for a couple hundred thousand dollars.
I would, but I don't feel.
You don't like showing up at church or the town when you can check for that. So we appreciate what you do and we.
I know, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, I don't know if we should be advocating for our agencies that we're involved with. And I I do think we need to have a way of looking at that.
The mayor doesn't vote and there's no conflict of interest. Yeah. All right, Meredith, you okay to close?
I am, yes.
Can I ask, can I ask one more question? I'm sorry. Um, under, I'm just going through this. Under the pump station, we have pump station rehab.
Yeah.
Which is five thousand, that's painting, fence, replacement, sandblasting, whatever. And then we come down and then we have pump house maintenance again. Electrical heating repairs, wouldn't that all be the same? The same as pump house maintenance or pump maintenance below it, so we have.
Maybe we talk about it together, um just because we have two members, but what I would do is that one of them is like electrics, like we can get your lights on. And the other is stuff that Tim Carr is impressed he wants to fix up. Uh he gave you kind of a list of various things that we get maintained, kind of like paintings, new fence, et cetera. Um and have a list, bring it together on it. But let, we close the session, so maybe we talk about it tomorrow. You hear me?
Oops, sorry, had to unmute myself, yes.
All right, I'll catch you tomorrow and I'll go into detail on it.
Okay, great.
Bye.
Bye.